The heater. You've shown us pictures, the testimony showed that you've shown us pictures of this exact heater unit that would be on site. And it's apparently been in the company's possession for a while. How long have you had this unit?
Mr. Sanders, would it help if I showed you, just to refresh your recollection, are you looking for an exact date?
A quarter of a year? What year? What quarter of a year? Something like that?
Would it help you if I showed you the exhibit that we already marked into evidence?
2014?
No, I don't want, I don't want the bracket. If you don't know the answer, Mr. Sanders, I don't want to give you a false answer. I think, you know, we might not have that information for you to make the date. I can tell you, information as to we know in its existence, one of the exhibits. If you want to see that date. But I don't want Mr. Sanders to answer if he doesn't know.
So it wasn't purchased in 2012 with that pipeline expansion?
Again, I don't know the exact purchase date. The photo that we showed was after it was on site and ready to be stored.
Okay. Maybe we'll get the date when it was purchased?
If I can find out that date, I'll get that date.
I just think it's relevant. Okay. Mr. Sanders, this winter, as far as my recollection, was a pretty tough winter. And there were several times where we had, I don't remember what the wind chills were. They were near zero or below zero. It was very cold. And I was observing the way my furnaces were burning, my natural gas furnaces. And several, several days, I said, wow, they're going to be working on that regulator, they're going to be checking out that regulator, they're going to be checking it out. And no one was there, time and time again. So the test, I'm not denying that the inner regulator at Vonage property may freeze up at times or whatever. But during, it appears that during the most trying times, that I would assume your system was under this winter, where the ice possibly would accumulate, there really wasn't any rush to check those underground regulators. So do you know the dates when you guys had to mitigate at those regulators this winter? Do you have a record of that? Because from my observations and some others in this room, we were on the phone with each other saying, can you believe it? They didn't even feel the need to check those things this winter. Can you provide the dates when you had to go check to make sure the freezing wasn't too crazy there?
Not off the top of my head. Again, the idea of running a system isn't specifically focused on this particular regulator. And again, the way we run the system is something that, again, I testified to, doesn't necessarily mean that the testimony is going to change. But the fact that the regulator is under duress and freezing is a fact. It may not warrant us to go out there because, again, if there are indications that we have from our field personnel, you're not there 24/7, and so we are. And so I would kind of question that idea that there was nothing wrong.
I'm not saying there was nothing wrong, but it didn't seem to be a huge sense of emergency under the most trying times of the system. And you did say some of the other components may have had to be work harder. But I'm trying to understand the need for us to build what appears to be one of the biggest regulators in your system right here. Oh, that's a comment? Okay. Thank you. I'm ready for Mr. Sanders.
That's Mr. Sanders?
Yes, that's it, Mr. Sanders. Thank you.
You're way over, you Tom.
Were they bad questions?
No.
Mr. Otto, the real estate analysis you did next to regulators, how many of them
were three-stack regulators? Or million BTU regulator, heaters, excuse me, heaters like this one? Because many regulators, again, I've mentioned this before in testimony or comments, I grew up a block away from a one-stack regulator. Do you know how many of those were three-stack heater regulators, stations?
As I testified earlier, the total number of stations that I used in my comparisons was five. There were a total of five stations. And the information I collected counted not only the number of vents, vent stacks, but also the height of those stacks. And the number of vent stacks ranged anywhere between one and three. And the height of those stacks ranged anywhere from 17 feet to 25 feet. So the proposed installation would have three vents at 15 feet in line with each other. So one is behind the other. Three at 15 feet. The others had anywhere between one and three at heights ranging from 17 feet to 25 feet.
Do you know how many were three of the group?
I think only one of them had three.
Okay.
And that was Wall Township. It had three stacks. The height of those three stacks ranged between 22 feet and 25 feet. And they were not in parallel, they were not in a row. Here we have three stacks in series at 15 feet.
By any chance, did you look at Edison, New Jersey, at any of the regulators there?
We did, we did look.
Because the reason I ask is there's one on Grandview Avenue in Edison, and there's a house literally adjacent to it. And I know as a kid riding by and everything, I know the technology's changed, and this is a sealed unit. But it was like literally the joke of the town, the poor people that lived next to it, the smells that came out of it and everything. And I'm just wondering if you could...
This is your last question. I've got seven minutes.
The question is, did you look at that one on Grandview Avenue in Edison, New Jersey?
I don't recall that specifically because the list was fairly long, so I'm not sure.
I guarantee you the value of that house was impaired.
Thank you.
Okay, one's going next. Carol? Can I have the same option? So I use this microphone then?
Sure, you know, let me slide a little bit here so that we can... Hey Dave, do you want my, my, this morning's, yes, don't mind me.
Sure, I'll leave the red over. Now your witness can come up there. Carol, sit on the side, and then your witness can sit over here.
Okay, great.
I'll sit back here.
Okay. I think my first question is for anybody who will answer it. I'm not too sure who to direct these to.
Where's the microphone?
Can you hear me? Carol, to the two witnesses that Mr. Otwell or Mr. Sanders, that's who are asking questions, I'll let them all in. Okay, I don't know who's appropriate to answer these questions. I'll throw them out there, you decide who you can answer them, please, okay? My first question, I guess, is, I'm confused between, can you hear me? I can hear you, but, yes, okay. I'm concerned about the difference between compressor and a regulator. Can anybody answer that for me?
Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Sanders?
Excuse me, just, Carol, just pick your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Ballmer, B.A.L.N.E.R., 96 Middletown Road, Homedale. Yes, that's my question.
A compressor is a device, can be any device that would pump pressure up, that would increase pressure.
So compressor increases pressure?
Right. So if you have an air compressor, you can fill your tires. If you have a nitrogen compressor, you can compress or boost pressure. So the function is just to boost pressure. A regulator is the opposite. It reduces pressure. Different, compressor is also a machine, piece of equipment. Whereas a regulator is a valve.
Okay, now, a compressor and regulator, do they both have vents or stacks that they use?
A compressor could have a stack. A regulator would not.
Now, we're dealing with a regulator here, though, right?
Heater.
They have stacks. You just said regulator would not, right?
Yeah, a regulator would not. I think you're referring to your heater.
Okay, does this facility we're discussing have three stacks or vents for emitting emissions?
For the heater, yes.
Okay. So this does have stacks and vents?
Yes, yes.
For the heater, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the original public notice that you put out, I think, was that in March, maybe? You refer to vents, but you do not refer to stacks. Now, two years ago, you referred to them as stacks. Can you tell me the difference?
I think we were limited, Ms. Ballmer, and Mr. Sanders, to this hearing. So I don't think we're going to entertain questions about a hearing on another site.
That's correct. We're not talking about the prior application.
Okay, I'm just trying to get difference in definitions.
Ask a question. Is there a difference between vents and stacks?
No, I'm wondering why stacks was left out of this public notice.
We're not, we're not, the other hearing is not part of this hearing without that.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. Let me rephrase the question. Are stacks the same as vents?
I just want to clarify for the record, the terminology stacks has been used more often, actually, not even more often, has been used by the public. The terminology reutilizes vents.
Okay, okay.
I don't know why you'd use that word.
Okay, because in the original public notice on the other one, it was used stacks, it was used in the public notice.
That's absolutely not true.
What? That's not true.
That's not true.
It's a different hearing.
Okay, all right. So the vents are the three tubular things that come out of the, oh, sorry. The vents are the three tubular things that come out of the regulator, out of the heater?
Out of the heater, yes.
Okay. And could you tell me again, the size, is it from the ground up, is it 17 feet?
15 feet.
15 feet. That includes the heater and the regulator, correct?
That's the height of the stack.
Height of stack.
I'm sorry.
You got me saying...
Okay, one more time. The vents are 15 feet, correct?
Yes, from grade.
And the vents do not come from the ground, they come out of the heater?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, how tall is the heater?
We testified it's eight, eight foot high.
So it's eight foot plus 15, isn't it? Would you make it 323?
No, the heater body itself is eight feet, the stacks are 15. Vents, the vents are 15 foot high. It's not added, the vents are 15.
That comes from the ground up, correct?
No, they're from the firebox in the unit. So it's part from the body to the top are 15.
I cannot, Mr. Intelli, I actually, if you're interested, Ms. Ballmer, in the actual dimensions of the heater, I'd have Mr. Ottelli come up because he gave extensive testimony on that as to the height, you know, and what is included in those heights. Mr. Sanders is not, you know, he isn't the site engineer. If you want that answer, we certainly can provide that, but when we get to Mr. Ottelli.
Okay, does one company make this whole contraption?
Yes.
What's the name of the company, please?
Telvalco.
Could you spell that?
Time slot.
T.E.L.
Okay.
V.A.L.C.O.
T.E.L., T.A.C.?
T.E.L. V.A.L.C.O.
You're saying D.A.L.
V is...
D.A.L. E.E.L., V.A.L., basic, correct?
C.E.L., Telvalco.
Okay, great. Now, we're allowed to come back, though, right?
I'm going to see.
We'll see.
No, I mean, we come back at the next meeting to ask other questions as experts, is that correct? If we don't have...
We're going to have the planner, the planners at the next meeting. And you'll have questions to ask of the planner. I'm not...
Have the other witnesses, Sanders and...
So we won't be able to...
And the other witnesses, other than these two, that we don't get to for the next meeting, for whatever period of time I have available, but we're voting in the next meeting. So the public portion is going to be available to the extent that that time exists, and then I'm going to have a hard date, a hard time, and we're going to stop the vote.
Okay, just one more clarification, please. So questions regarding the emissions and the components and the particulates of the emissions, we'll be able to ask that sometime before the public portion is over?
That'll be your air quality engineer.
That's absolutely my air quality engineer.
Okay, so we can come back and ask that, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. If you all want to just, I'm not in school, so feel free to just kind of come up and going.
I'm very quick. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Nancy Nebeliostro. I live at 214 Pebble Beach Court, Homedale, New Jersey. My question is for Mr. Otto. Mr. Otto, did you provide proper documentation of your analysis and survey to back up what seems to be extraordinary results? Because we're told there's not another substation like the one going here, so how could we have that opinion? You dismissed Mr. Dimitris' view on the effect on the property when he would be pretty representative of a whole buyer in our county. Because if you're sampling of people and your basis of buyers, if somebody from Linden, New Jersey, who goes to St. Edward Refinery, they really wouldn't care about your little substation.
I just want to clarify that the testimony and the record by Mr. Sanders, it said there are similar stations. So you just said there aren't any, and that's absolutely not correct. That's not what it was.
Exactly like it, okay? But did you provide, because any outcome can be very skewed by your sampling, and have you provided to our board to make such strong statements about no impact on property values that shows the sampling, that it's a proper representative, a proper sampling group to defend that statement?
Yes.
And when I was moving here, the mantra... Can you just let him answer the question first?
Shall I come up? The answer to the question, as I understand it, is that I did submit a report to the board about four weeks ago, which contains my analysis and conclusions.
And all details on that. The board has that? A detailed, okay, that's good. And one last quick question.
Well, I don't think that's your stuff.
Who did not?
I mean, his testimony will speak for itself, but I asked for the underlying data to support the conclusions of that.
Well, that's pretty important. We will provide that. I mean, that was entirely new by the public area. We will provide that.
I know you will, but that wasn't...
But that's the answer to my question. You did not. And one last very quick question.
Just let the record reflect, though, that we did submit a report, and it's a lengthy report. Just there was additional information.
There's a report, we all, it's public information.
Yeah, the report is one thing, but the basis that you built the report is very important, and you know that. One last quick question is, the mantra of real estate brokers is, location, location, location. You can pretty much dismiss that tonight.
I don't have questions.
I mean, don't you agree with that? Isn't that...
She's making me look...
Pick up the mic. Pick it up.
Last name J.H.K.M.J.
I think the mic is off.
Put the mic on.
There you go.
Tap it, tap it.
Must be a boost.
Yeah, good.
38 tackles is the drive. Okay, so I'm just trying to understand the network, Mr. Sanders. So you mentioned that a whole bunch of regulators, and in fact, each house is a regulator. And in the system, you said the first thing is to get it down to 100 psi. And as I understood it, there are three regulators in Homedale which do that. That's the first step to get it to 100, and then go down to 60, and go down to residency. So is that true, that there are three regulators that step it down to 100? In one case, it's from 250 to 100. In two cases, it's that. And in one case, it's from 22 to 100. Is that correct?
There are three regulators that feed the 100 pounds, yes.
Yes. And each of them come, is that first step that you were describing to us earlier on in your presentation, where you step it down to 100? Is that correct? So those are the three significant ones that service the Homedale?
Yes, they feed the same pump system, yeah.
And...
Dave, a little ladder, please.
Yeah, two of them are 250, stepping down to 100, and they do not have this freezing problem. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. They're all feeding off of the high-pressure system. That's why they have a heater.
So, okay, so my question is, there are three units. Till now, all that we've heard about is this one unit giving a freezing issue. Are the other two also experiencing this freezing issue? Or is it just this one in the Vonage property? Does that make sense?
The one station we have is a heater. The second station is also in review for a heater.
Okay, so, okay, so to clarify, there are three units. One unit already has a heater. Where is that unit?
That unit is in Lindgrot.
Okay. And then there's another unit which you say, which, other than the Vonage property, which you plan on putting a heater to, or where? Where is that regulator?
That's 36 and Laurel.
And, so that's a separate, I presume that you'll have to approach Hazle or whatever. I got a question. I mean, this is ridiculous. I've had to hold a bunch of meetings. It's not fair to give me three minutes to talk. It's ridiculous. Okay, so we have this one unit here. How big is the space for this one unit that's on the Vonage property? We saw pictures. How physically big is it? Is it as big as the stable, or how big is it physically?
The temporary regulator?
It was an existing regulator, which is now the older temporary by year.
Yeah, those are six-inch regulators.
Right, but I'm talking about the compartments there, which I see the picture right there. How big is that enclosure in its entirety?
That vault is a five-by-six vault.
Five-by-six. And in a prior testimony, you mentioned that it took about three to three hours to melt and defrost that unit.
Yeah, would be several hours.
So my question to you is, for a five-by-five-foot-type enclosure, something that can defrost in two to three hours, your solution is to put one of the largest regulator stations in New Jersey. That's your solution to that?
It's not one of the largest stations. It's not even, not in terms of capacity, it's not one of the largest stations we have.
So is it in the top 10%?
No. It's a significant station, and it's very...
So it's in the top 25%?
Well, I mean, it's an important station for the function that it provides.
Right, but I, you know what I'm trying to get at?
I don't, yeah. I'm not really sure what your question is, but in terms of the size, it's size for the flow that it's intended for.
Right, but what I'm, yes, I'm asking you is, for what seems to be physically a pretty small problem, the solution seems to be a very big solution. May I ask you, have you heard of catalytic heaters? I'm sure you know that. You can put an inline catalytic heater to this and solve that problem ongoing, right? I'm not an engineer, but...
I do know about catalytic heaters.
Yes, and the only, as I understand it, the only residue of that is water and carbon dioxide. So you could put that heater on without any resistance from anyone, yeah?
I think, again, we're not providing an answer to an alternative heater.
No, I'm talking about this side. I'm talking about this side. I'm not talking about the main regulator.
This is an underground facility.
Yeah, so I'm just talking about the solution to that, and I'm asking Mr. Sanders whether a solution of that nature can be done.
Mr. Sanders, can you put a heater in an underground facility?
No, not for this particular application there, and that's why we don't have a permanent heater there. I think I see where you're going with this. That's not sustainable, because, again, we're natural gas utility, and, again, you, you know, you cannot have a non-intrinsically safe ignition source in close proximity to the regulator station.
Well, no, I need to make this one statement. You have catalytic...
It's a harsh of a statement.
No, he just made a statement that you cannot put in close proximity. He has two millions BTU regulators in Englishtown using catalytic. No, he made a statement, I'm just challenging the statement.
At the end, there's going to be time for comments, and you can make that challenge at that time as a statement. And you can also come back and ask questions if you have time permits.
You know, we've gone through three or four, I mean, it's like a two-year process, and we're giving very little time to talk.
I only have so much time, sir. I mean, they have boxes, they have to put it on, I have, I'm calling this meeting at 10 o'clock.
We've got three minutes, and they have had how many evenings?
You want to stand here for 20 minutes, then none of the other people present will get a chance to ask any questions.
But it sounds like we only have three minutes.
At 10 o'clock, I'm calling...
Three minutes?
I get it.
That's outrageous.
I will try to be fast. Regina Crisione, 35, Rambling Brook Drive in Homedale. Crisione, C.R.I.S.C.I.O.N.E. Mr. Sanders, the, I know we don't talk about the last hearing, but I noticed that a tree fell down in the spot next door to where this is going to be. And my understanding is that there'll be a line of trees right next to this site. What would happen if a tree fell onto the regulator station? Has that been accounted for?
It's a hypothetical question.
Well, there are trees next to it.
Yeah, it depends on which tree. We do have trees that occasionally, if there's a storm, fall in stations. We have never had an incident or issue related to that. It just depends on, you know, it's a random act.
Now, my question is, how much potential damage could it do? I mean, how strong the station would be, like certain parts of the station?
Well, depending on where the tree is, it would hit the fence. Typically, it would hit the fence or some other barrier we have landscaping, et cetera. It's a hypothetical, and I really don't know how to answer that correctly.
Okay, let me rephrase it then.
With the fencing there, it just depends where it lands.
Okay, is there any kind of fencing over the station to protect it?
No, not from trees.
Is there any fencing on the northern side of the station? The whole thing is enclosed?
The whole station is enclosed, I mean...
Okay, so there are trees outside the fence on the northern side, okay. You said that they need to, you need to replace a pipeline because of the age of the one on Homedale Road. Why did you decide to increase the diameter at that point? I assume it's for increased usage. What was the size of the pole?
Maybe we'll go step by step, just so we can answer all your questions.
Was it for increased usage that you needed to increase the size?
As we testified, you know, previously, we operate a system for close to half million customers in order for us to...
Maybe we'll go step by step, just so we can answer all your questions.
Was it for increased usage that you needed to increase the size?
As, as we testified, you know, previously, we operate a system for close to half million customers. In order for us to meet demands in the short term, near term, mid term, and in terms of our integrity, we're always looking for opportunities for us to improve our infrastructure, just like, just like the highway systems, et cetera, bridges, roads, et cetera. You want to be able to serve your customers going forward. So, as an opportunity arises, you don't design as an engineer to meet the current needs, you don't replace in kind if the cost benefit is there. We don't want to upsize so that we can feed. Again, the piping is.
That makes sense, that makes sense, okay.
Time.
I have two questions.
Three minutes.
My questions are fast, his answers took long. I have two more questions. So, you increased the diameter of the pipe. What was the pressure of the old pipe versus the pressure of the new pipe?
We testified to that, it was 250.
The old pipe was 250, the old pipe going up Holmdel Road was 250?
Yes.
Okay, and it went up to 700?
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all for Holmdel.
One more question for you. The, would it be possible to?
Can you just, can you please have a rethought on that?
Sorry, the answer on the right.
The 700 PSI, it's our understanding, was on 520. What's coming up Holmdel Road?
Yeah.
All the way through.
All the way through, yes.
I believe that's what is in the.
Testimony as well, yes.
Thank you. Would it be possible, I'm just throwing this out there, to put, to decrease the pressure more steps, so that you would have a smaller regulator station in this spot, and then decrease the pressure further downstream? Yes.
I'm not sure I follow.
So, instead of going from 700 to 250, or is it 450? I don't remember the numbers. Would you, could you go from 700 to 600, and then further up, further downstream, upstream? No, further downstream, go from 500 to 300, something like that? Take a smaller station.
From a design standpoint, you know, the, the system that we put in here is, is the most cost-effective solution. What you're proposing here is to have a multi-stage pressure drop, which means the station would be a lot larger, have a lot more components, a lot more points of failure, and so, as long as you're stepping down the pressure, the physics of the gas stays the same, as long as you go through the appropriate pressure drops, you still wouldn't have the associated cooling effect. But to stage it out is just something that would be too costly for our customers to, to.
Okay, so it's not financially, it's, it might be feasible, but not financially feasible?
Well, it's, it's not operationally feasible either, because, you know, we designed for total cost of ownership, not just the installation, but also the maintenance associated with it. So, to have a station that has four components and add 16 components to it would just be counterproductive.
Okay, I'm not sure what you mean by the components. If you, if you have a smaller pressure drop, you have a smaller station, or that's not necessarily?
You start the same amount of demand, and so you would have to have multiple stages of cuts, which means more regulators.
More regulator stations.
Well, more regulators on this side.
Oh, okay, what I'm trying to avoid. Okay, that's it.
You're done, because you're at more than six minutes.
Six and a half minutes.
I have one question for Mr. Otto.
You're out of time. And in the back, you, Mr. Mr. Dangy, I just wanted to record, you were at eight minutes, so, so you know. Gentlemen in the pink shirt. I'm sorry. You can be next, okay, then.
My name is, my name is Salem Samra. I live at 11 Hayfield Court.
11, what court?
11 Hayfield Court. That's one of the new developments in Holmdel. And I just have two quick questions for Mr. Sanders.
And I.
Salem Samra, S A M R A. First name is Thalia. Mr. Sanders, my first question has to do with, and I'm sorry if I missed the details of your testimony earlier, or others' testimony, but what is emitted from the station if it's operating normally?
We have an air quality expert who can address that question.
He'll be at a different meeting.
He's here, but I don't, it doesn't sound like we're going to get to him, I don't really know, based on how many people.
Okay, because I'll be living walking distance from the station, so I just kind of want to know what will be in the air, or what's emitted from it.
And we have an air quality, we have an air quality.
If you can answer that question, I'll wait till that person's available. My next question is, it was in the news, interestingly, recently, about all those homes blowing up in Massachusetts because of a pressure problem. Does this type of facility reduce the risk of that happening, or does this have nothing to do with that kind of problem?
I'm hesitating here because it's a, it's a different system that, the root cause is still under investigation by the NTSB, and so I don't know the root cause of it. But again, it's a different system. That system is a, is a utilization system, which, you know, without getting into the details, it's completely different than what we use. And it's a different, a whole nother layer than what we're talking about here. This is a higher pressure system, feeding a larger area, and that was more of a directly feeding a house. A lot of those homes are inside meters, no regulators on the home. So, I don't know enough details about the root cause to, to talk about it, but it's a different animal, it's an apples and oranges type situation.
With the current situation that we're in, it's, we're not in danger or something like that, as far as you can tell?
Yeah, I, again, I don't know what, what exactly happened there. Seemed to be an overpressure, overpressure event. As we discussed in our design, we have overpressure protection, which means you have redundant regulators that if you have one failure, a second regulator would pick up. So, we, we do have overpressure protection devices in place in case of failures.
Thanks very much. My question for the expert on real estate, so again, my development is a new development in Holmdel. The house was constructed in 2017, and, you know, they're expensive houses, and none of us buyers were aware of this project when we.
The builder was.
My question to you is, in your analysis, have you seen a situation where the new construction development was near one of these types of facilities, and did it affect the value of those homes?
My investigation did not reveal any newly constructed housing projects in close proximity. I'm not sure what the proximity is here, I'm thinking this is.
It's about, it's about a quarter mile, maybe less.
Yeah, so that's, that distance is, the answer is no. I'm not aware of any new housing, newly built housing being located near to a regulator station, which is not surprising, because we've not been building very many new houses in recent years.
Okay, how many other people still have questions? Right, different people. One, two, three? One, two, three? Charles Grayland, one, three. Three people haven't asked questions yet?
Oh, have an ask.
Okay, why don't the three of you just come on up and, and then we'll let you ask your questions, and then we'll see how much time you've got.
I just have one question.
Just state your name.
Zach Dillstein, 11 Chardonnay Drive. I have a question for Mr. Otto. You argued that there's no difference in property value based on a comparison of a house 1500 feet with one that was 14,000 feet away. Seems like this anecdotal evidence is just a point of anecdotal interest. But to have a statistically valid conclusion, wouldn't we need to have either a complete analysis of all the homes near versus all the homes far away, or at least a significant random sample in order to make such a conclusion?
This trial, we probably don't have to come up here, because I'm going to make them.